I'm trying to order the Weaver City Council Meeting of November 23rd, 2009. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance required of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Yes.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry. Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Their motion to approve the minutes of October 26th, 2009.
For me.
Second.
Any changes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We'll have presentations to outgoing council members. Thank you for coming tonight. We have some awards here for our outgoing council members. Our first council member, I don't think he's here tonight, but I'll call, Mr. Romble. Mr. Romble? Mr. Romble served on city council from 2005-2009 for District One.
Thank you very much to all the citizens that have supported me. Thank you for this award.
The next member of council was Alina Rotola, City Council, District Four, 2001 through 2009.
I want to thank everybody here. I want to tell you this was one of the greatest experiences of my life. And I advise all of you to, at some point in time, get involved. Go into the political end of the city. You'll love it and you'll enjoy it. Thank you.
Last but not least, we have Dean Gokee, City Council, District Two, 2001 through 2009.
Well, this is the worst part of this thing, because I've never read really good for my notes. So, I would like each and every, thank each and every councilman I've served with for eight and a half years for their help. Also, I would like to thank Ralph Manzanelli, Vance Edwards, David Schneider, Wanda Sang, Gretchen Sirdney, and Mayor Jerry DeTulio for mentoring and giving me an education on how to be an outstanding counselor. While this office was, while in office, I was actively involved in many landmark project and events. Transformation and elimination of the Civil Service Board and Personnel Commission, which was a transformation over the city manager rule. The award-winning 38th Avenue Streetscape Project, the Harland Streetscape Project, development of the Creekside Park Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, and the establishment of three urban renewal districts. Wood Road, 38th Avenue, and the Kipling I-70 Corridor, and the elimination of height and density from the city charter. While on city council, I had the privilege of being the mayor proclamant, serving on the Jefferson County Funding Board, and the Jefferson County Housing Authority, and the Dirt Task Force Committee. I would like to thank all of the volunteers in this community that serve on the boards and commissions. You're a very important part of this community, and that's how you learn about government. And we have a counselor here that came up through the commissions, just like I did, and it's very important. I would, I hope that the city will manage to keep pace with the growth and the quality of neighborhoods, housing, thriving businesses, and a safe community in which to live. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Now, the judge will swear me in, so Judge Randall, are you ready? Here comes the judge, so.
Solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wheat Ridge, and will faithfully perform the duties of the mayor which you are about to assume.
I do. Thank you. Now, it's great pleasure that I will swear in our new council members. I'd ask Davis Reinhardt to please come forward. Davis, please raise your right hand, right there. Do you, Davis Reinhardt, solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wheat Ridge, and will faithfully perform the duties of council member representing District One, which you are about to assume?
I will.
Congratulations. District Two, Joyce J., please step forward. Raise your right hand. Do you, Joyce J., solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wheat Ridge, and will faithfully perform the duties of council member representing District Two, which you are about to assume?
I do.
Congratulations. Mr. Stites? One, two, three, four. Mr. Stites? Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wheat Ridge, and will faithfully perform the duties of council member representing District Three, which you are about to assume?
I do.
Congratulations. Mr. Demat? Do you, Joe Demat, solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Wheat Ridge, and will faithfully perform the duties of council member representing District Four, which you are about to assume?
I do.
Congratulations. So, before we go on, I'm going to take, we're going to take a five or 10 minute break, so if families, members want to take photographs, we can. We'll come back at 7:15, 7:15 where we adjourn. That was good timing.
I was going to ask if Heather Geyer could come forward and Chief Brennan and Chief Wick from Arvada, and also Jesse Johnson for some awards tonight. Is Chief Wick here? Our first award tonight is for Chief Dan Brennan. I'm going to ask Chief Wick from Arvada to please say a few words.
Thank you very much. Mayor and City Council, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I want to talk to you a few minutes about Chief Dan Brennan receiving this award from the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. And this award is because Dan is receiving the executive certification as being a police chief executive officer. He has applied for and received this certification. And I want to talk a little bit about what this requires in order to make this happen. Dan has to demonstrate to CACP that he has completed education and training requirements as well as formal academic training. He has to achieve certain standards in order to be considered for this. He has to have a certain number of years of law enforcement to gain enough points. It's kind of a point-based system. He has accomplished that. His years of service as a police chief, his continuing education, his organization services as a member of a law enforcement board, and if you're not aware, Dan is the first vice president of the Colorado Chiefs Association. And this award also verifies his high moral and ethical standards. Now, Dan is one of 30 police chiefs in Colorado who is certified as an executive CEO of a law enforcement agency. Not only is Dan receiving this award, but I just want to briefly tell you how actively involved Dan is in the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police organization. We can always count on Dan to be involved no matter what project we're working on or the issue. Dan is also very actively involved in the Jefferson County Chiefs Association. We have a very active and close relationship as law enforcement officials here in Jefferson County. We all work very well together, and Dan is an integral part of that. He's also been a coach and a mentor to a number of chiefs who have come in who are new in their positions, including me. And Dan is a very well-respected chief, not only in Jefferson County but throughout the Denver metro area. It's really a pleasure for me to be able to be here tonight to help the mayor present Chief Brennan with this award. I've personally been friends with Dan for many years. I've also had the opportunity of being a colleague and now serving in a chief's capacity with Dan, being here in Wheat Ridge. As you guys know, we're neighbors. We have a lot of things that occur back and forth between our two cities, and I could never ask for a better partner than Chief Brennan and your police department in the way they work with me and the Arvada Police Department. So, Dan, congratulations and thank you very much.
Well, Chief Wick, first of all, thank you for taking time out of your busy evening. He could be at a city council meeting as well, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here and present this and to counsel and to the mayor. Again, my thanks and appreciation for all of your work in terms of helping me as chief and helping our department. I look forward to working with the new city council members. And this award, although it's a reflection on many of the things that I've accomplished, quite frankly, I would not have accomplished many of these things without the dedication and commitment and professionalism of a very good staff. So, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank them as well. Thank you.
We have two citizen awards tonight that Chief will be presenting to Kyle Bacon and Grant Collins.
Kyle and Grant, come on up. Counsel, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to present two citizen awards and tell you a story in regards to these two young men and what they did on August 22 of 2009. On August 22, Wheat Ridge officers were dispatched to a burglary that had just occurred at the Walgreens store located at 4401 Wadsworth Boulevard. A male had run into the store, ripped out the change dispenser, bolted to the counter, and ran out the front door to a waiting car. The suspect got into a red Camaro which sped away out of the parking lot. Both Kyle and Grant were driving down Wadsworth Boulevard when they observed the red Camaro speed out of the parking lot with several Walgreens employees in close pursuit. They took it upon themselves to call 911, not really knowing what had just occurred, and followed the vehicle until they and we could determine what had just happened. They followed the suspect's vehicle through the neighborhood just south of the Walgreens store, giving location updates to our dispatchers on the phone until responding officers could find them. While following the vehicle, the driver of the vehicle attempted to lose them by blacking out the vehicle's headlights and the male suspect jumping in and out of the vehicle. Throughout this whole scenario, they continued to provide updates to the police department. With their directions, officers arrived and initiated a felony car stop on the suspects. Both Kyle and Grant were the cornerstone pieces of the officers catching these burglary suspects. Without their efforts, officers might never have caught this vehicle and its occupants. In addition, they were able to provide and give critical information which contradicted the suspect's statements as well as identify the male suspect in a show-up which was performed unseen. Both Kyle and Grant provided critical and crucial evidence and information that's been monumental in building the case against the suspect of this burglary. Not only has this incident been cleared by arrest now, but this may clear other similar burglaries which occurred in the metro area using the same method of operation. Both Kyle and Grant were key witnesses to what happened. In this single action, you both showed that you have the qualities highly recognized by the Wheat Ridge Police Department for citizen involvement and action when they could have easily ignored what they saw. The Wheat Ridge Police Department would like to take the opportunity to recognize both of you with these citizen awards in the Wheat Ridge Police Department ceremonial coin. Thank you for doing the right thing.
Last but not least, we have some savvy awards for our media. I'd like to call up Heather Geyer and Jesse Johnson. Please come forward. And Heather, you'll say a few words about the awards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'm very happy to be here this evening to share with you two awards that we've received from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association known as 3CMA. These are the first of our Channel 8 programming awards we've ever received. They are national awards, so we should be very excited for this recognition. With us tonight is Jesse Johnson. Typically on council nights, Jesse's behind our infamous closet in the back of the dais here. Jesse's creative talent and expertise in video production that has equipped us with the awesome programming that we've had in 2009. Jesse, I don't know if you recall when we went through the bid process, put together a recommendation for the city. Given the increased cost of Channel 8 production, he suggested to us in the bid process, why don't you do one monthly show every month, seven to 10 minutes, it'll cost this much money? And the city ended up saving thousands of dollars by doing that. And the programming that we've done has been very well-received by our community. It's available on our video streaming off of the city website, and so we definitely want to recognize Jesse and his creative talent for bringing these awards home to us this evening. We received two awards, and I'd like to have Commander Costa, Commander Lorenz, and Chief Brennan come up. The first award we received was a Silver Circle Award for the Top of the Hour Coffee with a Cop program. We submitted this in the category of promotional video, and certainly the chief and his staff can speak to the creativity of his staff that developed the Coffee with a Cop program. But this is a unique program to highlight on our Top of the Hour, and I think it was a lot of fun production-wise. So, congratulations, Chief and Jesse. Then we also received the Savvy, which is the first-place award, and it's very cool to be savvy. For our comprehensive plan, Top of the Hour production, our community development director, Ken Johnstone, Sally Payne, our senior planner, couldn't be here this evening, but this award is really a tribute to them and the hard work that they put into the comprehensive planning process. We really have the easy jobs in helping tell the story about the different services and projects that we have going on in Wheat Ridge, and it's the passion with the Coffee with a Cop program and the comprehensive plan program that really come across on our television. So, please join me in recognizing them.
Congratulations on the awards and congratulations to our newly-elected city council members. Next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for the members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So, please step forward to the podium if you have something to speak on not on the agenda, and spell your last name for the record and your city or your address.
Thank you. My name's Liz Telford. I'm the Gold Line Project Manager from RTD. Last name is T-E-L-F-O-R-D, and I'm here for two reasons. One is just to provide you a very brief status update on the Gold Line project, promised three minutes brief. The second is to thank Mayor DeTulio for joining us at DIA last Friday for a celebration that we had, and I'll tell you a little bit about that celebration. We had over 100 people at DIA to look at where the East Corridor train will come into the terminal. But what were we celebrating? We were celebrating the completion of the environmental work required for those two projects. And that's about a three-plus-year effort, really important, so we were excited about that. What does that mean that we're finished with the environmental work? It means we can in earnest pursue the funding for the project, we can go through final design and construction, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the funding because the funding for the East Corridor and Gold Line are fairly unique. What we're involved in is the Federal Transit Administration allowed us to be in a public-private partnership pilot program, and I'm going to call it the P5, so I don't have to say that again. And what is that? That's the first time that the Federal Transit Administration has allowed us to use federal funds along with private funds to leverage the money that we can get from the federal government. So, this is a great opportunity for us to show, both on the East Corridor and the Gold Line, that we can leverage those funds and make them go further. We still have to qualify for the funds. Highway funding is formula funding, as you know, which is every state gets a certain percentage, and then the state can figure out how to use it. Transit funding is not formula funding, it's grant funding, and so we have to compete nationwide for this money. Don't want to scare you, RTD has gotten funding grants for both the southeast and southwest corridors and the west corridor currently under construction, so we're pretty good at this, but this is a nationwide competition for this money. We're in the pipeline. We've made step one out of three steps, so we're getting there. What does it take to qualify? We have to be a cost-effective project. So, that means that all the local governments along the Gold Line can help me by putting up the Christmas trees and putting on the ornaments later, because we have to make this a very lean and mean, cost-effective project to win the money. And we fully intend to win the money, but it's critically important. We're going to phase the pentapie. The East Corridor will get built in Phase 1. Part of the Gold Line will get built in Phase 1 from Denver Union Station at Pecos, but from Pecos toward Road, we need to win that federal money. So, anything you can do to help us, we'd greatly appreciate it. Again, thank you, Mayor DeTulio. We had a great time on Friday and a great turnout, and we fully intend to build these two projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else to speak on or public comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. It's my understanding we have to add item 7. Councilmember Sang?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I may move to add item number 7, which is, let me find it here. This is a motion to approve payment to Code Consultants International in the amount of $41,310 from account number 0112270704 for October 2009 contract building inspections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion to add item 7. Please follow the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the subject. Item 1 is Council Bill 31-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 31-2009, an ordinance extending the moratorium enacted by Section 2 of Ordinance 1453, Series 2009, on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any application for a city of Wheat Ridge permit or license related to the operation of a business or cooperative that sells or cultivates medical marijuana pursuant to the authority granted by Article 18, Section 14 of the Colorado Constitution. On September 14, 2009, council adopted Ordinance 1453, Series 2009, an emergency ordinance which enacted a 90-day moratorium on the issuance or consideration of any city license or permit concerning medical marijuana dispensaries. That moratorium will expire on December 13, 2009. Since council enacted the moratorium, there has been significant discussion concerning whether the state will adopt regulations concerning medical marijuana dispensaries. Such state provisions may limit the city's ability to regulate those operations. The attached ordinance will extend the moratorium for an additional 90 days until March 13, 2010. This will allow the necessary additional time to consider the state's position and prepare appropriate regulation for consideration by council consistent with state law.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
Yes, Council Bill 31-2009 will be assigned, Ordinance Number 1457.
Thank you. Do we have a staff presentation on this?
I'm the staff, and I think the issue summary is read by Councilmember Langworthy, covers the field, and happy to answer questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody here to speak on item number 1, which is the moratorium on?
My name's Joseph Torbin.
Okay. Please just step forward and give us your name and spell your last name for the record and your city and your address.
My name's Joseph Torbin, J-O-R-B-I-N. My address is 5870 West 38th Avenue. We have a business here on Wheat Ridge. We've been here almost two years. I've seen businesses come and go, and to the point where it's affected our business in sales, and it's affected you guys and your tax dollars you're able to get from what we're able to create for you. We're asking, you know, the moratorium not be dragged out any longer, because what it will do for us is it will not only force us to have closed one business but not open another one here in Wheat Ridge. We're not looking to open up a dispensary, for say. We're looking to, I mean, looking to open up a better caregivership, something more affordable for the patients, not something trendy or for the kid that was able to get a license through, you know, because he fell off his skateboard, but chronically ill patients. In the community, we have been, excuse me, we've been approached by numerous senior citizens for this kind of caregivership, and we've had to tell them there is a moratorium at this time and would have to hold off on signing any licenses for that. It's not just the kids that, you know, we're trying to do the same thing everybody else is, and that is make sure it gets into the right hands and properly, it's dispensed safely and from a secure location. All I'm asking is that, you know, the moratorium by it going any longer, it's going to, like I say, force us to not only close the one, but to, instead of reopening the other, be forced to go to another city. But I thank you all for your time and, you know, thank you all.
Thank you. Please step forward for anybody else who wants to speak on this item. Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion and questions. Mr. Demont?
I have a question. I'm new tonight. I wasn't here for the first reading. I was here, but I wasn't voting. I read this over and over last week after I got this, and some news that we got from the state attorney general, John Suthers, announced last Tuesday that medical marijuana dispensaries are indeed legal and that it can officially be taxed. His decision also went down, went on to describe how this provides the cities the authority to regulate the dispensaries. They didn't give a timeline on when it, the state might be discussing it, how they might be setting the guidelines. I think the news is that they're not going anywhere. It's, I think this is what the initial 90-day moratorium was meant to determine and what it was waiting on. All these businesses are businesses in Wheat Ridge, and on the website all over town, it says Wheat Ridge is open for business. It says it in our literature. I think if we're, we need to show that we're willing and able to bring these legitimate business owners to our city, give them the same resources for education, which is the most important thing, and the vitality as we would to any mainstream business. We have six dispensaries? Is that right? I think we have five right now. And I'm not saying we need to roll out the red carpet for future dispensaries, but I also don't think we need to slam the door in the faces of the current businesses with a prejudice that they undoubtedly feel with the continuance of such a moratorium. I had a chance to talk to somebody from the RTD accessoride, and they wouldn't give me exact numbers, but they said they bring dozens of seniors to dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries, weekly. I talked to somebody from the Jefferson County Senior Resource Center. They said on average about three a week is what they bring. The problem that they have is that they have to put in their logbook. For those of you who don't know what the Senior Resource Center does, they give free rides to seniors 60 years and older, and they have to be Jefferson County or Adams County residents. That's the only criteria. They'll give them rides to the salon or the dry cleaners or to pick up their medicine or to their doctor's office, completely free of charge, without prejudice. They don't care where they take them. And they have problems with finding out where these places are. A lot of the patients themselves are embarrassed to tell the driver where they're going. This was made legal in 2000. It's been a long time, and nine years, almost 10 years, these people have been sort of dancing in the shadows trying to make a legitimate business. What I couldn't find is how these places are taxed. What I couldn't find also is where it comes from, which I'd be curious to know. But I think, without a doubt, the state will continue discussions. They'll set regulations of their own. I realize that we'll have to alter ours as they come. I think they'll have input. They're looking for us to maybe give some things a try, and they're looking for input from us as well. Something that I found this weekend, the state of Colorado projects this to be a billion-dollar industry yearly. There's approximately 100, I think they said just less than 100 in the state, divided by a billion dollars. They average, they speculate, I can say speculate, I won't say average, that's $10 million apiece. I think if we have five, that's a lot of money. I'm not sure that they fall under the same sales tax criteria. From what the attorney general said, based on, a lot of his information was based on a vote to the people in November on this last ballot. The city of Oakland, California, had on the ballot, which was supported 100% by these dispensaries, an 18% sales tax on medical marijuana. Our city sales tax currently is 3%. If you go buy a pizza, if you go to the store, if you go to Walmart, you pay 3% of that goes to the city. The voters passed it with the help of the dispensaries fully backing this. I'm not saying we need 18%. I'm not saying that it's going to be higher. I'm not going to say it's going to be lower. I don't know. But 18% is quite a bit more than 3%. And we're not regulating at all, and it's hard to, for our city staff to audit something like this would be, you know, almost impossible. They don't have, I don't know if the state is going to put in how to audit one of these places. I don't know how much research the state themselves will put into something like this. From what I can understand is they're depending on the cities and municipalities to get as much information as they can, and they'll take information from that. I did have a question, if I can. Ask Mr. Jordan a question?
You would address, no, actually, you'd have to address the questions to our staff.
Okay. Sorry. How are they sales, how are they taxed? How is the sales tax figured out on these places?
Well, on the sales tax level, I read the attorney general's opinion. It doesn't tell us anything we didn't already know, which is it's a retail sale. Prescription drugs are exempt from retail sales tax in Colorado, both the state and our level, but as you're aware, sale of medical marijuana is not by prescription. Instead, it's by a doctor's letter that you register with the health department. So, that means it's not prescription drug, means it's just a retail sale. A retail sale on the subject, as you know, or as you've said, to the city's 3% sales tax. So, that's how it's taxed. It's simply a retail sale. I don't disagree that as we move forward and the moratorium comes off and we have regulations, that there's not be challenges in auditing for sales, but, you know, that's really no different than any other business that the treasurer's office needs to audit. Each business has kind of its own unique quirks. The sales tax and treasurer's office, the city is very professional. They learn about the business, whatever it is, from soup to nuts, and then apply the city's sales tax fairly. So, from a sales taxation standpoint, that's, we knew prior to the attorney general's opinion that it's a retail sale and it is taxable.
Well, actually, public comment's over right now. We're back into council discussion. Do we have any other comments or questions from council? Ms. Berry?
From my perspective...
From my perspective, I, I don't think that we're talking about trying to prohibit this, but just to regulate it. And do we regulate it as a land use, um, just like commercial zoning, or do we regulate it like a liquor store where we have a special license? The, the question for me here is that it, it's how do we regulate it, and it's the, but what's the best way to meet the intent of the citizens who voted this in, but also to protect the citizens from unforeseen impacts, just like we do with any, any land use. Because it's so new, um, everyone is trying to figure out the best way to do that, and there's continual discussion among all the, the municipalities and the counties statewide about how to do this. Um, and I'm on the, this is for both the planners and for the municipal, and every day there are questions asked about that. So, what, for me, this moratorium does is to allow us to continue those discussions with every other jurisdiction around here to figure out the best way to regulate it for the citizens here, because there's no existing models, I, I think is why we need to take that additional time. So, for me, this is a way of taking the time to do this the right way the first time, and if we need to take an extra three months to do that, then, then we need to do that. But, um, again, it's not prohibiting, um, this, but just figuring out the best way to regulate it, um, to address everyone's concerns.
Ms. Sang?
I agree with Ms. Berry, and I, I think that probably we were let down a little bit by the state when this was passed, that they didn't come in with regulations that could be handed down to the municipality, so we would know what the intent was to regulate these and not wait until nine years later. Um, I, I liken it a little bit to, uh, when they did Tabor, that people were not aware how much Tabor was going to change their lives, uh, when it was, uh, voted on and passed. Um, I, I, I agree that we, I think we need more time to find out, uh, how we need to address these dispensaries, and, um, this moratorium will help, and hopefully it will help the state move forward in, in trying to regulate.
If you have any other comments before I move on to Mr. Davis, Mr. Reinhardt?
I guess, um, I guess I actually agree in principle that, that we're not in a position to do something now, but I, I would ask staff, um, if the state considers, um, if the, if the state fails to consider indefinitely the issue, whether we're not, uh, I'd hate to see this turn into a, um, a case where somebody else's failure act prevents us from doing, uh, reasonable and appropriate measures on our own behalf. And I was wondering how we feel 90 days, we're going to be better off in terms of answering what likelihood we are in a better position to answer this question in 90 days than we are today.
Sure, and that's a fair question. Chief may have a comment as well. Uh, we will be well into, uh, legislative session, uh, by then. Uh, there've been a number of legislators expressing their opinions on what bills, and a couple of bills have been floated and withdrawn even before the session's begun. Uh, and we may well have rulemaking by the Department of Health. Uh, so it's my, my belief that there's not an intention to continue this indefinitely. We have a good working draft of an ordinance that is kind of ready to be tested against what other people's experiences are. We're starting to get some reactions from around the state, and also what we see at the legislature. And, uh, I think that, uh, the idea is to, as was pointed out, to the greatest degree possible, have an ordinance that we're not going to have to start changing right away. But as the point's been made by other council members, and I agree with it, uh, I'm sure we will need to change it, uh, because this arena will continue to evolve, but we'd like to minimize that as much as we can. So, I think we can move with, with dispatch. There's not an intention to be floating out there for much longer.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I, I have some sympathy for, um, for this, but it has, I've had some experience with waiting for the state to take action, turns out to never be taking action. So, my own sympathy for delays close to over, but I'll be supporting this one.
Uh, Mr. Brennan, chief?
If I can just comment and advise council, uh, there is a working group with the attorney general's office that is meeting with Senator Romer, uh, right now to craft some legislation around, uh, Amendment 20 and the issues that are, that have been presented. Uh, although the attorney general did, uh, uh, author a legal document that said medical marijuana is, is taxable, the issue of dispensaries is still, is still an issue of question. Uh, the issues are really, what, what is the role of the primary caregiver to the patient? Uh, what does that, what does that look like? Uh, because it's, it's not well-defined in the, uh, in Amendment 20. Uh, the other issue has, has to deal with, with the issue of dispensary and grow operations. And, and I know that there's nobody on this, this working group that, that has a, a problem with Amendment 20, or the, or the, or the fact, citizens of this state passed Amendment 20 to provide medical marijuana to, to patients that meet the definition of that. But, but there's really no, no regulatory framework in regards to, to how that, that is done, or how that needs to be done. And, and I think that over the course of the last year, we've seen the Colorado Department of Health struggle with setting those, those regulations around that. Uh, so this, uh, working group with the attorney general office, the attorney general's office that includes stakeholders from a variety of different areas, not just law enforcement or prosecutors, is, is meeting with Senator Romer to try to craft that, that legislation for this council session. And it's, it's my hope, by the time that, that we get to March timeframe, that we have a pretty good idea of what that legislation, uh, looks like, and I'd be happy to, uh, to brief council as, as this develops, because it's a, it's a, you know, on a, on a daily basis, I probably get 20 emails in regards to, uh, from jurisdictions, other communities in regards to what do we do with this particular issue, and, and how do we, how do we follow, how do we follow up on this? How do we put something in place? Do we allow it? Don't we allow it? So, it's, we're not the only community that's struggling with this particular issue. And I really truly believe that we'll come out with some, some pretty specific recommendations in regards to the regulatory piece of that, so that primary caregivers are, are allowed to provide medical marijuana to, to their patients, that there are some definitions and some regulations around what a patient, a doctor, relationship looks like and should look like in the state, uh, what's, uh, what the verification for medical marijuana should look like right now, and, and whether or not dispensaries and grow operations are allowed, and what the structure of that looks like. Uh, you know, California has, as a, as, as Councilmember Demont mentioned, has been dealing with the medical marijuana issue for, for many, many years, but it's a different issue for, for them in terms of how their, their proposition, uh, out there was crafted, and, and what they're dealing with. And one of the struggles from a law enforcement perspective that, that they're struggling with in California is, is the organized crime element, and how they have infiltrated, uh, those particular dispensaries out there. So, uh, we in Colorado, from a public safety perspective, want to make sure that, from a regulatory perspective, from a licensing and a zoning perspective, that, that what we establish for the state and, and for, for our community Wheat Ridge is set up in such a way that we're providing the right services, we're allowing the provisions of the right services to patients who need that, and that we've got all the regulatory pieces put in place. So, I'd, I'd be happy to, to, to meet with any of you to discuss that, and, and my work on that committee as well, and to keep you updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing?
I want to make one more.
Ms. Berry?
I just want to make one more on, in, in general, is that I agree that, that there needs to be further definition from the state on, um, you know, how these, these, um, relationships are defined, and as Chief Brennan said, you know, what is a dispensary. But I, I believe that it's not the state's role in it, um, to take the local control on the land use element of this, and that it should be left up to each individual community and to the citizens of Wheat Ridge to decide where these sites should be located at, just like we do with, we have that land use authority with liquor stores and any kind of other use, and that, that shouldn't be something that the state, um, controls, that that should be something that we as a community control.
I'll close the public hearing. Are motions in order?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 31-2009 on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by councilmembers Reinhardt and Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Demont voting no.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Resolution 57-2009, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 57-2009, a resolution to extend the Metropolitan DUI driving under the influence task force intergovernmental agreement through the remainder of 2009, and to delegate the authority to execute such amendments and extensions of terms to the city manager. The intergovernmental agreement allowing the Wheat Ridge Police Department to participate in the Metropolitan DUI task force expired on December 31st, 2008, and requires renewal for the remainder of 2009. A motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 57-2009, a resolution to approve the signing of the Metropolitan DUI task force intergovernmental agreement, and for the council to hereby delegate to the city manager the authority to execute such amendments and extensions of the term of the Metropolitan DUI task force intergovernmental agreement, as are in the best interest of the city, provided that all such amendments and/or extensions of terms shall be subject to appropriations for the same made in the sole and exclusive discretion of the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval seconded by councilmembers Reinhardt and Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item three is election of mayor pro tem. Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce the election of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Snow, do we have nominations?
Yes, I have received nominations for Councilmember Davis Reinhardt, Wanda Sang, and Mike Stites.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to elect Wanda Sang as mayor pro tem.
Second.
We have a motion for Councilmember Sang seconded by Councilmember Demont. Discussion. Please poll the council.
Uh, Councilmember Jay, I'm still looking for a vote.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that it's a vote to, for the, the motion?
The motion is for Councilmember Sang to be mayor pro tem.
All right, so I either go yes or no on that, and then we go through the others?
No, we're, that's, if, if it fails, we go through others. If it passes, we...
All right.
Do you want to clear the board and have a...
One way or the other.
Right, yes or no?
Okay. Motion fails five to three with Councilmembers Stites, Demont, and Sang voting yes.
Yes. I would like to move to nominate Davis Reinhardt. Second?
Second. We have a motion for Councilmember Reinhardt seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Stites and Sang voting no.
Thank you. Item four is ratification of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to ratify Mayor DeP, Mayor DiTulio's appointment to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, which is, um...
Oh, no.
Joyce Jay?
No, it's item number four is mayor pro tem. It's, I'm sorry, it's Mayor DiTulio's appointment to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, item number four.
Oh, went over too far. Sorry. I move to, um, ratify the mayor's appointment to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. Joyce Jay?
No.
Joe, Joe Demont. I got it all screwed up.
Term ending.
Term ending, uh, March 2nd, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Joe Demont to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item five is ratification of the Budget Oversight Committee appointment. Councilmember Sang?
Um, I move to, uh, ratify the mayor's appointment of, of Joyce Jay to the citizens' budget side over, budget, budget oversight committee term to expire November 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
That was seconded by Councilmember Langworthy, Mr. Snow. Sorry, I didn't repeat that.
Okay, got it.
Item six is appointment of city director to the Wheat Ridge Business District. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Councilmember Joe Demont as the city director on the Wheat Ridge Business District Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is a motion to approve payment to Code Consultants International. Councilmember Stites, do you want to read that?
Uh, motion to approve payment to the Code Consultants International in the amount of $41,310 from account number 01122700704 for October 2009 contract building inspections.
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Anna. I just wanted to add my congratulations and welcome aboard to the three new council members. Welcome. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Same for me. Looking forward to working with the whole council.
City clerks' matters?
A couple of things. I announced it at the last council meeting as well. Um, following each municipal election, we do appoint two members to the election commission, and I'm looking for interested citizens who might like to be appointed to that board. There are, there would be two at-large citizens, so at any district in the city, you are eligible. And this will be an important year, as we have, uh, some election code that needs to be examined and be cleaned up. There's some discrepancies between our city code and some of the statutes, as well as our charter. And, uh, so there'll be some work to do there, as well as some other roles that election commissioners have with respect to petitions and election activities. So, I'm looking for any, uh, anybody interested and can contact my office for an application. Uh, you can also find that online, and, uh, have that submitted by December 7th. We'll be looking to make appointments at the December 14th council meeting. And then, um, on the matter of, uh, some, uh, national news that's been, been seen in, in the city of Wheat Ridge, I want to say, in my opinion, that there's nothing more important in our nation than the exercise of free speech. And I would go to any extent to protect that myself, and anybody has the right to speak what they wish. Um, there is occasion, and this seems to be one now, that I think there's some free speech that's being exercised that, in my opinion, goes beyond what is really very respectful of, uh, the community and the nation as a whole. And, uh, I would just like to say that the billboard and the language and the implications and the depiction of our current president by Phil Wolf of Wolf Automotive, I think is very, uh, offensive, and I do not believe in any way reflects the real nature of the city of Wheat Ridge and the diverse backgrounds that we have here. Uh, it's one thing to have difference of opinion on your political beliefs, your governmental ethics, your, uh, those sorts of things, but this seems to pang of, you know, to actually say that perhaps our president has something to do as a Mujahideen, uh, would have, which involves the murdering of US citizens, and I think that just goes way beyond what's really very respectful. And, uh, I, I condemn those, those words. So, that's all I had to say.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Berry?
Again, I want to, um, say thank you to everyone who served, and welcome to everyone new, and look forward to working with you.
Councilmember Demont?
Nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have two more years on council, and I'm, am excited about those two years and working with the current council as they've come in. And I also want to say thank you to those that did serve, and I think we'll start getting down to business at our study session next week, so I truly look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the appointment to the citizens'... Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the appointment to the Citizens Budget Oversight Committee. I'm looking forward to that. And I don't know if it's inappropriate, but I do thank the people who voted for me. I'm very much looking forward to doing the best I can for our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to offer my congratulations. Running for council is not an easy task, even in the best of situations. And so thank you for all your work that you did to go out there and meet the people, because it's really important to know who you represent. And thank you also for the people that did represent us and have been termed out, so.
Mr. Councilmember Sang?
I just want to say welcome to the new council members, and I look forward to working with you.
Councilmember Stites?
I'd like to say to Dean, Terry, and Lena, thank you very much for your service. Davis, Joey, and Joyce, I look forward to working with you the next four years. On a positive note, please try to have a great Thanksgiving, and please check your neighbors. Anybody around you that possibly might need a meal that day, might be a great way to make a friend. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.